This is a public hearing on a special assessment for public improvement in the city of Waupeka. And this also has a resolution, resolution number 1562 2024 that goes along with this. And I'll just read the part of it here. It's resolved by the governing body of Waupeka, Wisconsin. The governing body hereby declares its intention to exercise its police powers under section 66.0703 statutes to level special assessments upon property in the assessment district hereafter described for benefits conferred upon such property by reason of the following work and improvements. And it's because we're extending a sanitary sewer extension. And then there is a list of the properties and the estimated cost of the assessment to each one of those properties. Justin or Aaron, do you guys want to add anything to that before we allow public input?
Justin, feel free to if you would like.
Yes, as a public hearing to allow the people who are on this list and the ability to speak upon their assessments, give comment on it. They were notified by letter and then also published twice in the newspaper. The resolution here is a preliminary. We will be reviewing that later in the meeting as an actual item. Much like our assessment process with the sidewalk, this is based on the benefiting the adjacent properties. So tonight is the review of the public hearing later on and then in July, a final resolution.
Okay, so by in tonight's meeting, so that I understand this, we will be doing a just a preliminary resolution, which basically is stating that we plan on assessing, but we don't know what the exact numbers are.
Correct, these are estimated numbers. After the project is over, we will finalize, do measurements and confirm that with invoicing with the contractor and get the actual costs to the clerk, who then notifies those property owners before the end of the year. And then if everything works to schedule, it'll be applied. If it's not deferred, apply to their property tax bill by next year, January of next year.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, we will take testimony in favor of this resolution. If anybody would like to give testimony in favor of it, stand, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of the subject? Hearing none, we would take testimony in opposition. Is there anybody that would like to make, give testimony in opposition to this preliminary resolution? Anybody that would like to make testimony in opposition? Again, hearing none, I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:12 PM. All right, so we will be taking this up during the regular meeting. I guess I don't remember exactly what number it is on our agenda, but it is on our agenda tonight. Let's go right into the regular city council meeting. Welcome everybody to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is June 18th, 2024. We are starting the meeting at 6:13 PM. So I'll call this meeting to order by beginning with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God and with Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll ask our clerk Barb to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And do you also want to take role?
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Colin Dextrow.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Eric Helverson.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Corey Nagel.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Scott Perchatsky.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Barb, and would you start the introductions of our department heads tonight?
Barb Nowak, city clerk.
Aaron Jensen, city administrator.
Matt Klett, airport manager.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Jared Kivela, community and economic fulfillment.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Justin Behrens, director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Brian Hosele, chief of police.
And we also have our IT person, Josh Werner, who's in the back manning the cameras and the recorders. It looks like we also have, do we have somebody online?
It's Alex from Tykor.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, let's go with the consent agenda. This is items that have been put on the agenda where we're going to take one motion on each one of those, all of those items that are in there. So it would just be one motion unless you see something in the consent agenda that you think we should discuss and vote on on an individual basis. If you don't see anything like that, we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Perchatsky, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Again, say no, motion carried, regular agenda. Again, there are no handouts or changes to the regular agenda, so we would like to get a motion to approve this regular agenda as printed. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hagan, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Again, say no, motion carried. Under non-agenda items, we have announcements and correspondence. We have a presentation by Alyssa Durant. Corey, do you want to kind of set this up?
Sure, thank you, mayor. So Alyssa is a recently graduated, I guess alumni of Waupeka High School. She just graduated a couple of weeks ago. And she had the opportunity to represent our senate district in the senate scholar program. And she was one of, I think, three people, because there's three different sessions. So all the school districts in our senate district can apply and only one person gets selected for each of the rounds of the program. And so Alyssa was one of the three people to represent our senate district in, is it January? March, sorry. So Alyssa's going to tell us a little bit about her experiences there. And I'll send it over to her.
Soon as we get her, yeah, soon as we get it up there. We can, we can also put it up here and then Aaron can just. One of the TVs.
I have many talents. Okay, so I'm Alyssa Durant. Like Mr. Nagel said, I am a current graduate from Waupeka High School. And in March, I went down to Madison for a week. It was actually the week after spring break, so it was great. I got two weeks off. And I attended the senate scholars program. And there were about 11 of us from across Wisconsin who came down and represented our different senate districts. And it was basically an opportunity to not only learn more about Wisconsin government and politics, but to also meet other young people who are interested in following those types of career paths. So one of the big parts of senate scholars is really introducing you to the different branches of government and how they work in Wisconsin. So we started off by really looking at the senate. And we met the chief clerk and the sergeant-at-arms, since the senate scholars program really runs out of their office. And the biggest part that their office stresses is how to be nonpartisan and unbiased, because at the end of the day, they serve both the Democrats and the Republicans, and they need to work across the aisle and serve everyone. So we got the opportunity to page on the senate floor. And I am in the far right side, looking really bored, in a blue shirt. But, so you sit there and you run their errands, you get them water. And I didn't personally have to go do anything, but I did have a couple fellow scholars who did get to go run and grab some lunches for people. So, and then the next day, this picture actually isn't from senate scholars. It's from when I went down for inauguration. But we got to go into the governor's conference room, meet with Tony Evers, chief of staff, and kind of learn about how the election process to becoming governor works and the work that goes into that. And one of our, another senate scholar actually got to go to a bill signing since one of his senator's bills was being signed into law. So this is Trevor with Governor Evers and the co-signers of the bill. And then one of the more fun perks is getting to go to the governor's house and actually getting to eat a meal there. We didn't get to see the governor or his wife. We got to wave to her black Escalade as she drove away. But we got a tour of kind of the history of the residence and the different governors who've lived there and their influences on the architecture and the building itself, as well as we got to meet his personal chef. So that's just fun pictures of what we ate. And then we also got to go see more of the judicial side of it in the Supreme Court. And we got to go into the court chambers and hear from Justice, shoot, there it is, Rebecca Dalit. And she really walked us through the process of how you become a Supreme Court judge. And it was really interesting to learn about how she's, like she's supposed to be impartial about cases and be fair, but she also did say that it's, it's kind of challenging to get elected into a position like that, where you're maybe not running on a ballot per se, but you're still being supported by different factions that are throwing money behind you. And the different influences that can have or the image it can give you. And it was interesting to see the way that they choose cases that they're going to write on or look over, is they actually have, like, picture a green sparkly St. Patrick's Day hat, and they pick cases out of it, like just blind pick cases out of it. So that was interesting to see. One of the fun parts about being a senate scholar is all the people who have come before you that are spread out in these different jobs in politics and like Wisconsin government. So one, a former senate scholar actually works in the secretary of state's office now. And we had the opportunity to go down and spin the official pardon seal of the state of Wisconsin and press it onto these different documents. Most of them got thrown out because we were really bad at it. But, and then we also got to go down into the archives room, which is, you can imagine just a room with boxes piled in it. And we got to see the Wisconsin state constitution or the remake of it, since we learned that the official one was lost and no one knows where it is. But it was interesting to see how the name of Wisconsin has changed from like territorial status and even more, I'm not sure what the word I'm looking for is, but how the, how the, even the name itself has changed over the years. And so this wasn't my favorite part of the entire experience, but it was a great opportunity to get to sit down with different, different organizations and groups that are supporting the government and supporting the senate. I say it wasn't my favorite just because it was a lot of listening and talking, not on my part, but. So we got to sit down with the media, different newspapers, different journals, and kind of hear about their job and the responsibility they have of informing the public, as well as lobbyists who are coming in and obviously lobbying for different interest groups. A lady came in and lobbied for QuickTrip, which was a big fan of a lot of people, as well as we got to hear from some, excuse me, chief of staffs from different senators' offices. And I was lucky enough that Senator Joan Balwig, who is my senator and probably most of yours, she sent her chief of staff. So it was fun to get to hear from my own senator's office. So along with getting to page on the floor, we also got to go to caucus with the different parties. And so the Democrats caucus is on the left, and then the Republican caucus is on the right. And since the Republicans had the majority, they obviously knew what the bills were going to be ahead of time, while the minority party did not. And it was definitely interesting to see, one was definitely more formal, since there was a larger amount of them, and one was more intimate, since there was smaller numbers, and they could have more discussion versus needing to prepare for what was going to come. So Dr. Tammy, why can't I think of her name now? Shoot, Tammy Worley, who's in charge of the senate scholar program, is really great about pulling your senator aside and getting you a one-on-one meeting with her. And so while not everyone got the opportunity, because session did end and a lot of senators went home, we did all get the chance to meet with either our senator or someone from their office. So I was lucky enough to get to meet with Senator Balwig before she flew off to Switzerland to see her daughter. And we got the chance to have a little one-on-one meeting. And I have met her before, so it was more of a, where are you going to college and what are you going to do than a talking about government or politics meeting? But it was very nice. And she encouraged me to apply for her scholarship that I did get. She actually used me for PR too, so. Okay, so, well, paging is a big part of it. The other really big part of it is drafting legislation, since at the end of the week, our final thing that we do is we hold a public hearing and then a committee meeting. So we met with the LRB, the Legislative Reference Bureau, for hours and hours and hours, days on end, drafting legislation, talking with their lawyers. And then eventually, once we chose legislation to pass, we split off into different groups and the quote-unquote majority party that passed the legislation got, got their legislation chosen, went in one group. And then the people who did not get their bills chosen went in the minority party and they got to write amendments. And I actually ran for and got voted to be committee chair. So I got to preside over the meeting and hit my gavel a couple times. So then, once we were at the public hearing, this was really our culmination of the week. We had friends, family come, and we had people, actually other former senate scholars who are now senate pages in the Capitol, they came in, they gave false testimony, and they kind of razzed us a little bit about seeing if we actually knew the bills we were trying to pass. And then we kind of got to go back and forth, talk about them, question each other. And yeah, it was a really fun time. It was, it really made the experience real, that what you'd been working towards was actually tangible and you were, what you had been working for so hard, it felt like you could actually make things happen. Our topic was lowering the age for blood donation, so. And then it wasn't all work. It was a lot of work and it was a lot of hard work, but we also got to do some fun stuff. We got to go up to the very tippy top of the Capitol. We got to walk outside on the very top observation deck. And that, the painting on the very bottom is the very top mural. And if you reached your hand up up there, you could touch it. And we went all around Madison and we got to go to different restaurants. And for someone who is going to UW, it was really fun to get to walk around campus and see stuff with other people who were going to be there with me next year, so. Oh, and then I should mention, it was boys' basketball state finals that week. And Dr. Tammy Worley, her son was in the finals. So we all got to go to the game and watch, which was really awesome. Any questions?
Go ahead, Colin.
Mr. Ant, you said you were going to go to Madison. What are you studying there?
Right now.
What do you plan to study?
Social welfare and Spanish.
Cool, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Alyssa, for coming. It was a very nice, good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on here. We have public input. This is for anybody that would like to speak to the council about a non-agenda item. If you'd like to, please either raise your hand or step up to the podium and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any non-agenda items tonight? All right, moving on then, we have community department head reports. And we have, Ann Linden is reporting on the Winchester Academy for the Waupeka Area Arts and Culture Network. Ann, welcome.
Good evening, warm, literally greetings. My name is Ann Berger Linden, and I'm very proud to be the executive director and a trustee of Winchester Academy. We, being Winchester Academy, are an active member of the Waupeka Area Arts and Culture Network, also known as WACAN or simply the network. I'm taking this opportunity to thank you all, and Henry Velicker in particular, as your representative to the network, as partners in the flourishing arts and culture ethos that has developed in Waupeka over the last several years, due in much part to the Waupeka cultural plan initiated in 2018. Recently, actually on June 5th, a very successful meeting with our new state senator, and this is due to redistricting at the state level, Rachel Cabral-Govera was held at the Community Arts Hub. This meeting was spearheaded by Ann Katz, director of Create Wisconsin, our state's only community cultural development organization. Create Wisconsin advocates, serves, and promotes the state's creative people, industries, and communities as essential to Wisconsin's success. This meeting was attended by leaders from the members of WACAN and Greg Roman, our community grants writer. Senator Cabral-Govera listened as each organization described their activities in the community and the importance of collaboration. Wisconsin state funding to support arts and culture is among the lowest in the nation, and we advocated for recognition and funding at the state level for the importance of a thriving arts and culture climate for the social, intellectual, and economic development of our state. Winchester Academy offers approximately 22 programs each year on Monday evenings, usually in the library's lower-level meeting rooms just down the hall. Our programs are arranged into three series, winter, spring, summer, and fall. Obviously, we are currently in our summer series. Our free programs are aimed at adults, though everyone is welcome to attend, and we cover almost any topic from A to Z, utilizing academics from colleges and universities throughout the state, as well as professionals and local experts. We attract anywhere from 40 to 140 people to downtown for each program. We benefit from our membership in WACAN and appreciate the partnerships we have developed with other member organizations. For example, this summer, on August 5th, we will be hosting a session in collaboration with the library on their community read on the book Where the Deer and the Antelope Play by Nick Offerman. Molly Ranky from the library staff will be leading that discussion. We're also looking forward to the Third Annual Seventh Grade Outdoor Experience Day on September 27th. That will be held at the Eco Park, and that's in collaboration with Waupeka Middle School science teachers and the city of Waupeka Parks and Rec Department. Thank you, Laura Colbert. Also this fall, and I apologize, I don't remember the exact date, Brian Hosele, along with Laura's brother, I believe, will be presenting at Winchester Academy to talk about the roles of varying law enforcement agencies. Winchester Academy is proud to be participating with the library exhibit room Holocaust exhibit later this year by hosting an excellent history professor, Tim Crane, on November 18th. And we're grateful to Liz Kinnear for presenting this opportunity to us. We continue to receive excellent support from the city's community media department, hi Josh, in the form of on-air promotion of our programming, recording and rebroadcasting of our programs, online video availability, and occasional necessary technical support. We are grateful to the library, Eric Bailey, for making their excellent accessible facilities available to us and to the city facility staff for keeping the building clean and comfortable. And we thank Justin and Jake for that. We're once again looking forward to participating in the Yule Side Tide Celebration in December, as it has become a highlight of the holiday season for our community. The city's support from police, fire, media, and streets departments is essential to its success, and we're looking forward to another festive series of events. Thank you for your continued interest in and support of Winchester Academy and WACAN. Any questions?
Ann, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that. All right, next up, we have department head reports, and we'll start over in the airport. Matt.
Thank you. The Humane Society of Waupeka County held their annual rummage sale two weekends ago at the airport, and they had a excellent turnout for both the donation portion and the sale itself. This past Sunday, the Waupeka Alliance Club held their Father's Day fly-in, drive-in, except it was all drive-in because it was so rainy, but they were able to serve over 700 people. We have a few upcoming events. Tomorrow, Brittany and I will attend the WHAMMA meeting in Green Bay. And the main discussion will be on Act 12 and how airports in the state are dealing with that. That's the personal property tax per fluffle. Evoc training will be completed at the airport tomorrow. And on June 24th, the EA Chapter and Waupeka Parks and Rec is holding a rocket class at the airport.
All right, thanks, Matt. Anybody have any questions, comments? Go to the library, Eric.
Okay, library is off to a busy start for the summer. Lots of traffic, had a great turnout for kickoff for the summer reading program. We also have summer library program themed shirts. It's a adventure begins at the library. Those are for sale at the library if you're interested. Designed and housed, they look real sharp. I am happy to report that in our second year, offering state park passes, these are day passes for checkout from the library as a program available through the DNR that popularity has much increased. We got 20 last year and we didn't go through them all. We were already through the 20 that we had this year and have had to request another 40, just two weeks in. So that's been very exciting to see. Happy to report that the tech services opening at the library has been filled. Current staff member Laura Jandisak, who has a wealth of experience previously in working with our library system on establishing consistency and procedures for libraries, will be stepping into that, so we're very excited about that. The head of a youth services position should be up and posted shortly. Revised job description should be approved this Wednesday, and I expect it to be up and posted for about a month shortly. and I expect it to be up and posted for about a month shortly thereafter. So that'll be great to be, to have that filled, once we complete that process. Ann had mentioned, we're doing a community read this summer. The book is "Where the Deer and the Antelope Play" by Nick Offerman. If you're interested, I encourage you to pick a copy. It's a very funny book. He also has some very specific views on things, which is one of the reasons we picked the book, because if it's something everybody agrees on, that usually makes for a boring discussion. The "Show Us Your Adventure" exhibit, which is photos from the community, is up in the exhibit room. And I encourage you to go and take a look. Lot of really fantastic, really fantastic photos on display. Finally, we've got a movie on the park, in Swamp Park, scheduled for July the 13th. It'll be baseball-themed, looks likely to be League of Their Own. If you're interested, think about stopping by. It's a great setting. That's all I've got.
All right, Eric, thank you. Questions, comments for Eric? Let's go to community development. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. My report starts on page 26. Following Eric's note on the movie, we did have a movie on June 7th, which we showed Dial of Destiny on the Bank First Green Space, just behind us here, next to City Hall. Not the greatest turnout, but still quite a few people. We did receive comments from some passer-bys that did not know the event was occurring. So we have kind of regrouped, and we're going to try to do more handouts and more ways to market those movies. So as Eric mentioned, the next one's on July 13th. And then the next one after that will be in August, in collaboration with Arts on the Square. So some great events coming up there. Continuing on the events, which is, there's an item later in the council packet for this event, but the downtown businesses have collaborated to do some downtown late-night shopping events, in which the downtown businesses will stay open late. They will have music in the bandstand, as well as food trucks. So a few great events coming up there. The dates for those are June 20th, July 18th, and August 15th. So I believe there is a flyer posted on the TV in the library and in the lobby here at City Hall. So feel free to check that out and spread the word that those businesses will be open, and there'll be some great entertainment downtown. Development continues, different parts of the city here, River North cottages. So there's an updated photo. Thank you to Josh for taking that updated photo in June. So progress continues on that, really exciting to continue to watch progress. River North ridges, the final plat is actually on the agenda for later today to start the single-family project. Have also been working with a developer for the River North Ridges Apartments, which should be to the south of Godfrey Drive, next to Go Right Way. And they are diligently working to get all the application materials in for that, so we can get that to plan commission in August. That's about it, unless there's any specific questions about other developments or anything else occurring?
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Jared, what's going on at the St. Mary Magdalene site?
Yeah, so we've been talking with the developer about that one. I believe they have submitted a new plan to the state. They did have to switch architects. Something happened with the team of the one that they were working with, and they can no longer complete the project. So they have obtained a new contractor, a new architect, re-submitted plans to the state, and I believe we're waiting to hear back from the state on approval, approved with conditions denied. So.
Thanks. How about Weasels?
I have no update on Weasels. I know they continue to work. I see contractors over there every now and then. But I do not have a great update for you or a timeline of when they would open.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Jared. Let's go to finance. Hi, Steph.
Thank you. We've been busy working with McCrone, which is our insurance agency for property insurance, on renewal forms and prepping for our annual workman's comp audit. We've also been working with the Wisconsin Retirement System as they undergo changes to their secure system, so we are updating all of our employee information and forms through their system. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the National GFOA Conference in Orlando. It was a great experience, and I had a lot of takeaways from the sessions that I was able to attend. In addition to earning 19.5 CPE credits, I also made a lot of connections with other finance officers from other states and even Canada. There were people there from South Africa and Alaska, so it was really cool to have that big, broad difference of perspective on how everybody does finances. It was also school districts in addition to municipalities. I'm excited to keep in contact with them and continue to hear their perspectives and get ideas on how we can improve our processes and create efficiencies for the city of Wapaka. That's it.
Thanks, Steph. Let's go over to Public Works, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. My report's on page 35 to 37 of your packet. Wastewater, the first note, our sewer extension project. Of course, we're going to be talking about assessments tonight. I have in there a note, work was progressing slowly, but since then, things have really picked up. Each day, they're installing about 500 feet of sewer line, which is pretty impressive because they're going about 20 foot down. So things are trending upward as far as progress with that project. About halfway down, Jesse has an idea to improve how we accept outside waste. Right now, we allow outside waste, such as holding tanks and septic tanks, to be dumped there for a fee. It goes straight into a manhole, which goes to the plant, but that can lead to some spills and some odor. So we're looking at trying to make that a little better, make it easier for them, like a bigger, I guess, accepting channel, so. The bottom note, we're looking at accepting waste from Agar Pure. This is the cheese factory in Wyowiga. It's going to be a trial to see how it affects our plant. We're pretty hopeful. And again, this could be just another outside source that either helps our process or helps our funding. Moving on to streets, you might have noticed the guys out there painting lines throughout the city, focusing on downtown. They like to do this well in advance of 4th of July, make the downtown pop a little bit before everyone comes downtown and takes a look at things. That's going on throughout the city, so if you see guys out there with cones, you know, slow down and just move over for them, please. We have gotten a lot of asphalt work done. First of all, our roadway project for 2024 is complete. We have to do a final walkthrough. But we've also been patching a lot of holes over the winter time. We've had a number of sewer backups and water leaks, and those are continuing, unfortunately. But on the street side, we're trying to get back to those patches. So again, it could be gravel, it could be potholes coming up, but we're working on getting to those. I'm going to skip water and come back to that. Facility side, working through some issues at the rec center. The curtain in the Blue Gym has been kind of an ongoing issue. So finally, we're getting our manufacturer rep to visit us from out of state to help troubleshoot this issue. Jake's been working in the old armory room, adjusting shelves and adding table space to make the PD staff's life a little bit more efficient with cleaning and storing their equipment that they need. Finally, our facility, we had the open house on Friday. It was very well attended. I won't get into too many details, but we suspect we had at least 100 people there. Lot of positive comments. We have just a couple landscaping items left to do, and we should be all moved in. We have a number of anniversaries. You guys can look there on your own, but those are some solid guys right there. And then finally, I'd like to bounce down to page 37, inner waterside. Can zoom out a little bit, Aaron. In your basement, if you have a basement, or maybe in a crawl space or in a back closet, you have something that looks like this. The picture is cut off. God darn it. There it goes. This is a water meter right in the middle. On either side, there's going to be some shut-off valves. And then the very far left is your water lateral that comes in, usually under a concrete slab. A water utility is asking people to take a picture of that lateral and then send it to us. And that goes back to basically our record-keeping. So DNR, PSC is requiring additional information for all utilities, not just us. And this helps us. And mainly, what this does focus on is determining if it's copper, plastic, galvanized, or potentially lead. And that's basically the main reason, is just to quantify those laterals or the number of those, so. So if you could please find this somewhere in your house and take a picture and send it. We've gotten some pretty interesting pictures, so I threw this in here to try and explain it a little bit better.
Okay. Thanks, Justin. Colin, go ahead.
Where's, I'm trying to find where to send it to. Is there an email address?
Thank you. So water@cityofwapaka.org works. Or you can just go to our city website and look up the water department. Send it to any one of the guys or myself. Our email addresses are on the city website.
Thank you.
Let's go to Parks and Rec. Laura?
Thank you. My apologies. I think in the throes of all the busy season, I forgot to send Barb my report. So we had our Lakeman ceremony last Friday, and it went really, really well. We had a good turnout, and Kronk was able to throw the first pitch for both football and baseball to his sons, so that was great to see and well-attended. There was a loss, but I think the guys, the Lakeman guys, really appreciated everybody being out there, and it was a good night. We have new rec classes. They're called Flow Arts or Hoop Tech Tips and Tricks Silk Fan Dances. It's going to be drop-in, so they're right now during the day. We're just trying to check it out, see what the interest is, ages five and up. And we have some new lovely ladies who do this. They also do fire dancing outside of this. They are not teaching fire dancing in the rec, so don't worry. Our kayak rental station is up and running at Lower South Park. If you see the tandem kayaks right side up on the bottom level, that's okay. There are drainage holes there, and they actually fit better when they're right side up, so no need to worry. I did talk to the owner about that. We have King Road under construction right now, which is going to impact our soccer season. So if anybody's worried about that, please let them know there will be flaggers on King Road so that we can still access the usual parking lot to get to the soccer practice fields. There may be two days that they're asphalting, or they need to shut the whole road down, but we're going to see if we can get that to happen outside of the Monday through Wednesday that we hold soccer, or we'll put out lots of notifications to let people know to park at the high school. We are starting, as of this week, Ecoli testing at the beach, and it will be a weekly testing. They will most likely test on Mondays, and we will hear on Tuesday what the result is. And we will put signs out, whether they're green, yellow, or red. Red is just, we're getting close, and, I'm sorry, yellows, we're getting close, and red is, please don't swim. This is the first time we've done this, but when we know better, we do better, and this is highly recommended that we do. And with the number of geese that we have out there, this is probably a really good thing that we're doing for the safety of our swimmers. So just in case you hear anything about that. We had an excellent Eco Park Third Grade Environmental Day, May 24th. Although the storms rolled in, we were able to shift gears and go to the WLC. I want to do a shout-out for Justin, who stayed behind and planted 145 trees that the kids did not get to plant, and they planted 45. So we have 190 trees, saplings, out at Eco Park that will hopefully turn into a beautiful forest in the future. And pickleball lines are now drawn at both the high school and the middle school, thanks to the Community Foundation grant. We also have bins out there with paddles and pickleballs, so if anybody doesn't own any and they want to check it out, please contact either the school district or Parks and Rec for the combination to get into the bins. And enjoy yourselves out there on the pickleball courts. Take pictures if you want to. In case you haven't heard, our splash pad is getting resurfaced today. It was sanded down, and they put a double layer of grip surface on there to make sure that we are as safe as possible for slipping on the wet surface. So it needs 48 hours to cure, and we will reopen back up on Thursday. And I don't remember if I said this to you, but we had a workday for Friends of Wapaka Parks on May 11th, and we had 10 very robust volunteers there who got a ton of work done at Riverside Park. And it was a great day.
Nice. Thanks, Laura. Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, Chief Holzell?
Yes. The Police Commission did not have a meeting this last month. I was gone on vacation, and my feeling, he was out of the office. So we're going to meet again in July. But we did sponsor a cops and bobbers event. It was the first annual down at South Park. And that was in conjunction. We were really grateful for the Wally's for Kids with the donations that they gave. Each of the kids were able to get a fishing pole. They were able to get a tackle box. Some of them were able to go fishing out in a boat. Some chose to fish at the docks. But it was really a great event with the officers, Conservation Ward, and John Kaiser was there and gave safety talks. So it was really good, and everything turned out for our first event. They also did a cookout at opening night for the Lakeman Field. The officers did that, and that money generated goes into our community outreach programs that we have. So when we do different things for the community, the money raised there goes right back into the community. And the last thing that I have is our TASER, new TASERS came in. Those are the TASERS 10. That was a capital project. We're just waiting for Axon to come to City of Wapaka and train our trainers so the officers can upgrade to the new TASERS. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Josh?
Now that done with all the stuff with Public Works and those big projects, I've been getting into some maintenance tasks on the IT side of things. Been getting some new batteries into our oldest battery backup units to keep those working good. Firmware updates on different devices on our network. And then I've been notified by AT&amp;T that at some point in the future, they are going to discontinue copper phone service in this area. And looking into options, what need to do in our remaining buildings that still have copper phone lines. On the Wapaka Online side of things, anyone that's talked to myself or my staff in detail about stuff, we've been excited about Wi-Fi 6 or Wireless AX. You may have heard those terms tossed around a little bit if you're into technology. And that's kind of the next evolution of wireless networking, and it's got kind of three promises. Better penetration through obstructions, a 40% to 50% speed increase over past wireless standards, and then some client isolation. So if there's one device or one customer connected that's maybe causing some issues on current equipment, that can cause degradation for everyone. On this, it's supposed to keep them separate and not cause problems for everyone else. And COVID and the supply chain issues and everything we've been through has delayed us getting this equipment and development of it a couple of years. We finally have our hands on some of it. We've been selectively putting it out there, and we have been very impressed by what it's doing. So Ralph's working on some plans where we're going to start deploying that first and doing some more testing with it, but I think it's going to be something very good for our internet service as we get that out there more. Got a, just got released today, we've got a surplus auction online for a bunch of old technology equipment. A lot of it's the old equipment that was pulled out of our old Public Works buildings. That's posted on our website and Facebook page. And then jumping back to Friday's events at the Public Works building, anyone who wasn't there, pictures and video are posted on our website, Facebook and Instagram page for anyone that wants to check that out some more.
All right. Thanks, Josh. All right. Bart?
Thank you, Mayor. May has been busy with the licensing renewals, which you've seen at the last couple councils. We continue to complete specialist assessment letters for different title companies for selling or refinancing. Board of Review was held in May. We didn't have anybody come to the meeting, but there were several questions for open book for Boomer that were resolved before the meeting. And then we held the Joint Review Board on June 11th, and Stephanie and Erin filed those reports with the DOR. And that's about it.
Thanks, Bart. All right, and Erin?
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. My report, City Council, can be found, I believe, on the next page. Here we go, page 41 of your packet. First, I want to thank Justin, Roger Hanson, Laura, Josh Peterson, and Josh Werner for all their work on that June 10th date. There was a ton of work that went into it, leading up to it. It was an awesome event. date. There was a ton of work that went into it, leading up to it. It was an awesome event. Thanks for everyone who showed up. I think it's, I texted Mayor Smith the next day, and I just said it was, and I thanked him for having the idea of the big blowout celebration. And it's important to do that stuff. I mean, there's a ton of work that goes into that, and it really is kind of a motivating and thing when you're, when you get to that point and are able to celebrate some accomplishments. So great job, guys. Also want to let everyone know that a press release went out today. The Fire Commission did end up appointing their first time, or first full-time position in the history of the Opaac Area Fire District. And that person that was hired into the position of Fire Chief is Jake Waller, a current city employee, which is, we are so happy for him. We are also sad to lose him in his current position of Facility Superintendent. Jake has been with the department since 2009. He has been in the captain's position since 2018. And he was a great candidate. And that's, yeah, tell him congratulations next time you see him. Justin and I will work together, continue conversations on what that means for our organization as we move forward without a Facility Superintendent for a short time. Jake's first, first date as a Fire Chief will be August 5th. So we have about a month and a couple of weeks. We did have a meeting with, and finally had that introductory meeting with the Senator, our new Senator, Senator Cabral-Guavera. And it was, it was a good meeting. We talked about shared revenue discrepancies amongst municipalities in our region and around our population size. And she's, their staff has done a great job of getting us some information back on shared revenue calculations, what they're based off of, what the reasoning is. So we'll continue to look over that. Also, talked about keeping healthcare cost in check, or health insurance costs in check, and some, she had some creative ideas for that, as well as diversifying revenue streams. So it was a very, very, I thought it was a good introductory meeting. There was a question, Paul, I think you asked about the old St. Mary's property. Jared did a fantastic job of explaining where that's at. We do expect that to start sometime in the summer. The only thing I'll add to that is City Council can expect to see an amended development agreement come forward with that property. There have been some timelines that have expired in that. So I would, I did actually call the property owner this week, and I'm waiting to hear back on when he may be able to attend a council meeting to review that agreement. We did have a conversation, started the conversation around budget time already this morning in a department head meeting, talking about capital improvement projects. So all of us department heads had that conversation for about an hour this morning. And we did so because we want to get a jump and be prepared, obviously, for that August meeting when we have our workshop for capital. But we also have a conversation prior to that, likely prior to that, around some agreements with the state through some grants that have been awarded, which is an exciting conversation to have. One is the West Fulton Street Grant, which you've all heard about. We want to make sure we can fit that into our financial plan. The one that you may not have heard about, unless you read my report prior to this meeting, is Greg also was able to receive funding for $972,000 for the replacement of the pedestrian bridge that's been shut down for a long time. That's an 80/20 match. So the state would cover 80% of the cost. And that is another thing we'll talk about as far as feathering into our, our current financial plan. That, just as an FYI, that also scored as the number one ranked application in that pot of money, which was the TAP grant or the Transportation Alternatives Program. So congratulations to everyone on that. I think Barb mentioned that we did have the Joint Review Board meeting with all of our jurisdictions that are required by statutes to be a part of that. City Council will see a lot of that information when we go through our TIFF budget workshop as well. And then we also had an emergency management training. This one was the second one in as many months. The County Emergency Management, Eric, Andy, helped make sure that it was offered here. I was able to attend one of the two days that it was at the county. This one was on COOP COG training. If you don't know what that is, it's continuation of operations planning and then continuation of government in the event of an emergency. There's a lot to it. That's, that's a, that's a in-depth plan. This is coming off the heels of a training that was on our, are more of our emergency management planning, which we're kind of in the process of updating. So we're going to focus on that right now, but it was a really, really good insight into how much work needs to be done in that area. And I know, Eric, you might want, you might have wanted to say a few words about that training. At least you did like four weeks ago. We haven't talked.
Yeah. So it is really good training, and it's one of the things we have to probably look at getting all the department heads together and identify what are your essential functions in each department. And when you start to write it down, you may be surprised and think, well, this is what I do every day. But you have to break it back down and look at what do I have to do? What are the expectations of the community? What really needs to be done, you know, on a, on a weekly or a bi-weekly, monthly basis? One of the big things people forget about is payroll is probably one of the biggest ones, because if you can't do payroll, people don't want to come to work. The other thing is just regular city services that are provided. If you had a two-week power outage, which is not unheard of, what could you get by without doing? What do you need to do? So it might be something we're going to have to look at doing as a workshop locally with the department heads here and start getting that ball rolling sooner than later, probably.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. And that is all I have for my report. Otherwise, I'd love you to answer any questions.
Yeah, Henry, go ahead.
I really think it's great that there's going to be a renewed focus on emergency management, because of all the things that we do in government, our citizens really want us to be able to function when the chips are really down. And raising awareness and for the staff to take this seriously, I think is a very important thing for our city. So I appreciate all your guys' buy-in as you work forward on this stuff. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Let's move on then to unfinished business. We have, we have ordinance number 092024, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 12.10 Scrap Dealers License and Permits. This is the second reading of that ordinance, so we would be looking for approval on this ordinance tonight. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. This one starts on page 82 of your packets. There is a red line on page 83. To really sum this one up, we're just looking to remove a section in which prohibited scrap dealers from working on Sundays, as well as between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. In working with a few of the scrap dealers, or actually pretty well all of them, through their renewal process this year, I did have them take a look at our ordinance, just make comments, want to get their input as experts in their field. And they had said for them personally operating Opaaca and operating in collaboration with the Opaac Foundry, it is just not possible to not work on Sundays and not work at least minimally between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. They said when the foundry's operating, they need to be operating and open. If they need, if that means taking in a load, that means taking in a load. They said there's a few times that obviously super peak operations that, they said they've, they've had to operate or process or do those things, but they are far enough out in the industrial park that we received no complaints during those times. And actually, I believe, as Colin had made mention to, or asked a question about in the last council meeting, we only allow scrap dealers in our heavy industrial district. So the zoning code and zoning districts really prevent any, or mitigate any negative impacts from them operating on a Sunday or between those hours. So in working with Plan Commission, staff and Plan Commission felt the most comfortable by just removing that section to clean it up. So looking for approval. Did not hear anything from the public between the first council meeting and now. So.
Motion to approve ordinance 0924.
Second. We have a motion by Dykstra, second by Martin, that we approve ordinance number 092024. Any discussion? If not, Barbara, call it all?
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Holverson?
Aye.
Scott Proczowski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, this is under New Business License Report Number 1680. This is a Class A intoxicating liquor license and Class A fermented malt beverage license. This is at Opaac Mini Mart, which is at 314 Badger Street. Most of us remember this as a Holiday Gas Station next to the Dairy Queen. This is a change. So this would be a new agent as well as a new owner of that property. So we did ask them to attend tonight, and I do see that they're in the audience. So I don't know if you have any questions of them. I, we do know that they're, they aren't doing anything different, right? Yeah. Okay. Do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
He's a shy one.
Okay. So it looks like it's just a transfer of the license as well as the agent here. And, and so we would be looking for a motion to approve.
Being as they're practically my neighbors, I will move to approve.
Motion by Hagan, second by Proczowski, that we approve License Report Number 1680. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate that. Next up, we have Resolution Number 1562. This is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments under municipal police power pursuant to subsection 66.0703 of the Wisconsin State Statutes. Dustin or Aaron, or both of you guys?
I'll kick it off, and Aaron will probably help out along the way. And I know you have a map. You ready to go? So this is similar, or just, this is the topic from the public hearing. Our resolution, preliminary resolution to levy special assessments on properties out by Runway Drive. So this is our sanitary sewer extension. There was no utility, sanitary sewer utility out in that area. We made a decision to extend it out there to help spur development and, of course, connect the airport at the same time. So much like we have done with other improvements, we have the right within state statutes, or the power, I should say, and within our ordinance, to assess the value from the improvements to the adjacent property. So all those that are listed on there are immediately adjacent to the sanitary sewer line and are getting in benefit from that as far as like property value goes. The way we did this is we received bids back in March for this project, competitively bid, advertised project, and went with the low. We are using the numbers from those bids in spreading that out over all the properties as an estimated cost right now. This project is a little unique. Typically, within a roadway, you have properties on both sides of the road. Here, we had private property, and then on the opposite side, Highway 10. So when we applied the cost or value to those properties, we gave them an immediate 50% credit because the opposite side was Highway 10. So it's kind of like a double jeopardy. We did that and actually got that idea from some professionals within our network, saying that is a normal thing to do. The state statutes speak on doing what is fair and equitable, and we felt that was within that wording. Aaron has the map up now. It shows you these areas that are being, where the values being assessed. The very far left, next to Ferg Lane, is a property that was accounted for back when sewer was extended. To Ferg Lane, there's a manhole right there. And past that is our sewer, our gravity main extending out to the east. Oh, we, when we looked at this, we have a couple of options on how to do the assessment. Linear footage is one, so taking the total cost, dividing it up by a linear footage of frontage or by acreage. Here, we thought it was the most fair to do acreage. You can see there's various sizes of parcels out there. Some are a little larger. A few are chopped up into smaller bits. If we were to do the linear footage, some of them, smaller ones in the back would get zero. We didn't think that was fair, even though they still had the same amount of access to the sewer line as everyone else. Furthermore, there's a huge benefit to the airport, which is being covered by this assessment, as you can see by the purple shaded area. So like every other assessment, we put together all these plans, specifications, improvements, schedule. That's all been shared with the clerk. So anyone has the right to go and request that. Excuse me. And like all the other assessments, we wait till the very end. We get the actual cost, give that to the clerk, and then those are applied. Here, the values are so high that they have the option to put that on their tax bill and pay that over eight years with interest rate. I can't remember what that was exactly.
Yeah, it's, it's two points above what our bonding rate was, which would be about 5.85%.
Correct. And there are a couple of properties out here that are outside of city limits. Those assessment charges have, we have to defer those because they're not within the city. If they annex within the city, then the assessment would then be triggered. Certainly, they have the right to pay this off immediately if they do. However, they're not required. Anything else?
No, I don't think so. I think you've got a pretty good job explaining it. Really good job explaining it. All right. Counsel, questions, comments? Yeah, Henry, go ahead.
Okay. So the staff, we're, we're not considering delayed assessments of this project, right? Because normally, we, we have done those when there's improvements to properties that are actually outside the city limits. And then when they come in, they pay the assessment. It could be many years afterwards. But it looks like all these properties are in the city or not?
No, they're, so right above where it says Runway Drive, that is township. And then there's a few parcels east of the terminal. Those are in township. So those would absolutely be deferred at this moment.
Deferred, delayed, okay.
Delayed, deferred, yes. Same difference, so.
The ones in the city would, would not?
Well, we, we've been talking to defer those as well and wait for a qualifying event, which would be a development, which we have on one of those, a sale, which we have potentially a couple of chunks of land up for sale now, which means they can work that out during the negotiation period. And it kind of makes it a little simpler that way, so.
Well, I guess I would like to talk with the counsel and make a couple of points about the deferred or delayed assessments. I think the final resolution can wrap everything up. I don't think a decision has to be made on this today necessarily. It's just the preliminary. But I just, I don't know. I'm not sure I, I totally convinced that I'm against deferred assessments for the whole project. But there's some thoughts that have crossed my mind about it. I think in terms of fairness, on other assessments we do with sidewalks and stuff, with new, it's 100%. With existing replacement sidewalks, we charge 50%. We're already discounting the assessment, which seems fair. Justin, for how you explained. Uh, Justin, for how you explained, um, the city, our share of the assessments are probably two-thirds of the total cost of the project. Uh, next year, um, I, I didn't have the exact number, we floated a one point six million dollar bond for sewer this year, and I think our project out there is about nine hundred thousand total? Is that what the initial number is?
Uh, the bids came in at one point four.
Oh, okay, so we're pretty much the full bonded amount, and our interest payment alone next year on that bond is seventy-five thousand dollars. Out there, many of the parcels have ag assessments on them, right? And we have no ability, because now we have utilities in there to say, uh, that they're worth anything more, because by law, I think we have to stick with ag assessments. So, and then finally, by ability of switching or, uh, picking the option of, uh, paying over eight years, in some respect, they are deferring the assessment. Uh, and we can always true it up if we get a project and take all that into consideration on a case by case basis. So, I, I guess, I'm still wa- debating myself about this, but those are points that make me think we should not defer assessments on all the parcels that are in the city for this project. And I know some of them are substantial, thirty-five thousand, sixty thousand, but many, two thousand, four thousand, they can still split it up over, uh, over the, uh, the eight years. So I would, I, I would, I, I feel like we should be considering taking these assessments when we can get them, because we're incurring a huge part of this cost already. So that's just my thought about it.
Thanks, Henry. So, let's, let's just make sure we understand this, though. Tonight, what we're doing is, we're just calculating what the estimated cost is for these assessments. We have not come to a decision whether city residents are going to pay that upfront, but they have the right under our city code to pay that over eight years, or, uh, or to just defer it to a time when, when something happens, like they either sell the property or do an improvement on the property. So, we're not, I mean, we're talking about it tonight, but that really has nothing to do with, with this resolution that we have.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. But a point has been made, I think it's a valid point. Colin, go ahead.
It's my understanding that there's a certain threshold that, uh, on dollar amount that gets you to be able to do, to defer this over eight years. What's that dollar amount as far as? And, and the reason I'm asking the question is, some of these are mul- what I'm getting at is, like, there's one owner that has, well, a couple owners that have a smaller dollar amount, and they own two parcels, and I'd like to see that they can do the whole thing over eight years and not just one parcel or the other. Does that make sense?
Five hundred bucks?
Yeah, I think it's five hundred.
So everything is above that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty minimal, because it goes along with our sidewalks, you know?
Thank you.
Allow them to defer it. Scott, go ahead.
Justin, are we gonna do the final calculation, the, uh, this, when that project is done laying the sewer line, or when the pump house is in, how does the timetable look? Or do you have a idea of the timetable?
I'd like to try and do it this fall yet, after, uh, the, the sewer is all in, because the lift station is a lump sum cost, even if it is not installed, we'd still know what that final dollar amount would be.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think, too, they probably want to get this all done, right, so they can appear on next year's tax bills that go out in December.
And it would have to be done this fall for that?
Does it, yeah. And I, and you can include engineering costs, correct, and any kind of legal costs i- in terms, in the assessment calculation?
You can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is the total cost for the project, I agree. And I think, am I right, your names back there are Thiel's? Yeah. Uh, they are the one, if you look down at the bottom, they are not in the city of Willpack, and actually, the sewer line is not even going that far at this time, but, uh, the ability to hook up, uh, they will have that ability to hook up. But theirs would be a deferred assessment.
Correct.
Uh, and they would not be assessed as long as, um, they did not annex into the city and connect.
Correct.
Right? Okay, uh, anybody else have any questions? Scott, go ahead.
Just regarding your last statement, do they, they get a deferred assessment, or they don't get an assessment at all because they're not in the city? And if we don't annex that to allow them to be in the city, what, could they still hook up? How does that work? You know what I'm saying? They can't hook up if they're not annexed into the city, right?
Correct, our ordinance states in order, you have to be within city jurisdiction in order to benefit from our utilities.
So they would, to, okay, I get it, all right, thanks.
We have, in order to allow that, we'd have to change our ordinance, and then also our water, water utility tariff, which is, I know, different than sewer, but that would take state approval.
All right, so again, this is just a preliminary resolution, uh, we'll see a final one, once we know what those numbers are, but, uh, uh, staff is asking for, uh, approval of this resolution number fifteen sixty-two tonight.
I'm hope to approve resolution fifteen sixty-two.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by, who was it over here? Velicker, resolution number fifteen sixty-two, this is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Colin.
Let me make sure I understand this, uh, so the letter of the law has a, a, an amount that we can assess to everybody who's impacted in a positive way about this extension. We've cut that in half for these assessments due to the fact that we're hoping to extend this one way or the other and get people outside of this area, and that Highway ten is one side of it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, so, the other half of that, is that funded by the city separate from this, or, I'm sorry, probably the Water Utility Board, separate from this sewer board, sorry, separate from the city of Willpacka payment here? Is that correct, too?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? So by, this is a roll call vote, so by roll call, you will be voting to approve this resolution. Our will call the roll.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dmitri Martin.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, uh, next up, uh, resolution number fifteen sixty-one, this is a compliance maintenance resolution, C Mar twenty twenty-three, and Justin, you're still up here.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, this starts on page eighty-eight, and with the resolution behind that is the actual, uh, self-report, so we'll start on eighty-eight, the actual resolution, uh, which I am looking for action tonight from you. Uh, basically, our C Mar, Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, is a self-reporting scoring, uh, form that the wastewater department has to do on their facility, uh, as mandated by the Wisconsin DNR. A resolution is required by the governing body, uh, it's usually set forth to either spell out, uh, some sort of corrections are needed, and put those in a resolution, or saying, everything's good, no action required. Uh, so we are the latter again, uh, we don't need to take any, uh, necessary steps to make any kind of, uh, immediate action within the plant. Uh, the following pages, we'll skip through very quickly, um, this is mainly filled out by Jesse and puts in all of our data points within there. At the bottom of each page, it says total number of points, it's like golf, the lower, the better, so you get a zero, um, it actually means an A. Uh, so as you go through all these things, it's based on our permitting and our performance, um, all the parameters are within, there's even a section on financials, and not just at the plant, but within the collection system itself. And, um, as you do scroll through and zip through here, um, as you get to the very, very end, it shows a perfect score of four point oh, uh, which is great. Uh, we don't always get four point oh's, but as far as I can recall being here, I think the worst we got was like a three point seven, and even with my predecessor, it was still very high. So the guys do a very good job down there, they take a lot of pride in their work, and this is the show from it. So, if you want to talk a little specific sections, certainly we can talk about it, that would be exciting for me, uh, otherwise, we can just go right to approval of the resolution.
Go ahead, Colin.
Oh, it was, I was gonna, I was waiting for you to ask for it before I said.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Last time I did it before you asked.
Well, I appreciate that, then. Uh, so we are looking for a motion to approve, uh, resolution number fifteen sixty-one.
Motion to approve resolution fifteen sixty-one.
Second.
Motion by Colin Dijkstra, second by Eric Olson, that we approve, uh, resolution number fifteen sixty-one, this is a compliance maintenance resolution. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, we will do a roll call vote.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Dmitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, road closure requests for downtown late night shopping events, and Jared, you're setting this up here.
Yes, happy to.
You did notice that, uh, you have a representative behind you there?
Yes, perfect. So I will pass it to her at the end, if there are any questions, um, that she can answer, I'm sure she would be more than happy to. The group of downtown businesses have gotten together and are looking to do a few late night shopping events, uh, in which they would stay open until seven PM. Um, those dates would be June twentieth, uh, July eighteenth, and August fifteenth. Um, at each downtown late night shopping event, they do hope to have, um, live music in the bandstand, uh, each night will be a different musician. Uh, they also hope to have food trucks at each one to try to draw more people downtown, um, and provide a food option during the late night event. The food trucks, I, I, still two TBD, um, I believe they have one, uh, that has applied for the June twentieth, uh, which is Taco Maze, I believe. They're still waiting on another one to get their license in, uh, to be approved for the June twentieth, uh, which is coming up here soon. Um, of course, if this is not approved, they would not have food trucks, uh, at this location, they'd have to find an alternative location. The two locations that they are looking for approval will be on East Fulton Street, uh, it's the south side parking stalls, uh, right along the library, uh, you can see that on page one sixteen, um, similar to where the, um, cars park for the old time car show, uh, they did last year. Um, the next spots that they are looking to have food trucks will actually be on private property at the Danes Hall. Uh, the Danes Hall has granted them permission, uh, city council, uh, does not need to approve anything here, since it's on private property. Uh, the last spot for August fifteenth will be on West Union Street, uh, the south side parking stalls, uh, from the intersection of South Main Street to the alley to the west. So, they are seeking, um, approval to have the road closures there, um, they don't really need anything for the late night events, as they just hope to stay open and have a variety of, of different attractions to lead people down here, so. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, otherwise, our downtown business representative, I'm sure is happy to answer questions as well.
Okay, thanks, uh, Brooke, do you want to say anything about the event? Okay.
All right. I guess I do have one question, and you may not have a good answer, but, uh, do you know approximately how many businesses are planning to participate, just for the general public's knowledge? Twelve? Any, any of the restaurants? Or just shopping? Gotcha. So two restaurants donated for the band, and twelve businesses at this point will be open, so. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, Henry, go ahead.
Just one quick question for Jared and Brooke, is this an outshoot of your business roundtable discussions that just sort of kind of bubbled up, or?
Uh, this is something that did come up during the downtown partnership meeting, um, you know, um, city staff could not take the lead on it, but city staff was happy to help bring things forward to council, prepare memos, things like that, get approvals where needed. So, this, this is a strong effort by those downtown businesses, so I do strongly applaud them, uh, for taking this initiative and really trying to draw people downtown.
Thank you for making the effort.
Uh, I'll just agree with that, I just want to say thank you, Brooke, as a, as a re- from a city resident standpoint who lives a couple blocks from downtown, we are definitely looking forward to it, we've had it on our schedule for a while, so, thank you.
Okay, so you heard, uh, the recommendation by Jared, uh, we would be looking for a motion to approve these road closures.
Move to approve.
Motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by Dijkstra, that we approve of the street parking stall closure of East Fulton Street, south side parking stalls, from the intersection of Main Street to the crosswalk, and this would be on June twentieth, and on West Union Street, uh, south side parking stalls from the intersection of South Main Street to the alley on August fifteenth, from two PM to nine PM. Any further discussion? Just a voice vote here, uh, all in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Again, say no, motion carried. Jared, thank you, although I think you're up still here, uh, final plat, uh, River North Ridge subdivision on Royalty Street.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this one, uh, the plat is shown on page one nineteen of your packets, uh, there's a closer up view on page one twenty. We do have, uh, Alex, uh, from Tycore as a representative for this final plat, they are, uh, the act, the active developer, uh, looking to work on this project. So, similar to the preliminary plat that had come forward last month, uh, this is just the final version of the plat, uh, took into account all of staff's comments, all of plan commission's comments, uh, any of plan commission's comments, and then any comments that came in from the council. Um, those were then put into this final plat, um, and then brought forward for, uh, final approval, uh, so that this could get recorded, um, or sent to the state, approved by the state, and recorded, uh, at the county, uh, to become official, so, uh, not really any significant changes from what you guys have already, um, looked at with the preliminary plat. Uh, the only item with this, um, would be, staff would recommend approval contingent on the official approval from the state of Wisconsin. Uh, we are still waiting on their technical review sign-off, and we won't be able to, uh, to record it without their sign-off, so, um, we don't believe there will be any major changes with that, if any changes at all, um, that would affect this final plat and require it to come back, so, uh, staff is comfortable with recommending the approval contingent on the state approval and sign-off.
All right.
I'm happy to take any questions, otherwise, a- as mentioned, Alex, I'm sure is happy to take any questions you guys may have.
Or does Alex have any comments?
That as well.
Uh, no comments, we're just excited to move forward.
So are we, Alex. Okay, so we'd be looking for approval of this, uh, final plat. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hagan, that we approve the final plat for River North Ridge subdivision, which is just off of Royalty Street. Any discussion? Colin, go ahead.
Are the, the road names set in?
Are the, the road names set in stone there? Those are picked as part of the plat? Is that correct?
Yes, with approval of this final plat, those will be the road names.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just to be on the safe side, we're going to do a roll call vote here.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, Jared, you're still up here. Public arts submission for the shine sculpture.
Thank you very much, Mayor. For this one as well, we do have a representative from the arts group, Marcy is in the, in the audience here tonight to answer any of our questions, and I believe she may have a piece of glass to show us. So just a little background on this, the Wapaka Community Arts Board is working on a collaborative art project between themselves, the community, the foundry, just many wonderful partners. The end goal is going to be a shine sculpture, which will consist of four, four by eight fused glass style pieces that will be mounted in Rotary Riverview Park, similar to the layout as Aaron is showing on the screen. The fuse glass and are meant to kind of work with the sunlight and create the shine effect, thus the name. Lot of great articles done on the project with the collaboration of the foundry. Those are within the memo here, so if you have not had a chance to check those out, please do. A little bit about what the sculptures or the art pieces are going to look like. This is just one of the four by eight sections where the fuse glass will go into each square there. So Marcy, I guess maybe good, good time, we can let you show one of the fuse glass pieces and let you comment and say anything you'd like to say.
I'm a little nervous to send this around because I don't want anyone to drop it because it is glass. This is just one of the over 100.
Why don't you just walk around?
You want me to walk around? Well, this is one of the 170 pieces that were made by the community. Sailboat, obviously. We had a lot of themes that were made. You guys can touch it if you want. This is one of the larger ones, so this is the eight by eight. And there's also a smaller one. So as you can see on the diagram, the eight by eights will be kind of diamond shaped, and the six by six will be square. Almost everybody got their shape. What else should I say? I guess I'd like to just answer questions because this is our third meeting that we've brought this to. We first went to the, Jerry, what was it called? The planning commission?
Went to the plan commission, then you went to the parks and rec board, and now you are here for final approval.
Final approval.
I believe I'll double check with Laura. Parks and rec have, they have approved it, recommended. Plan commission has also recommended approval. Staff recommends approval. Contingent upon the final, or the creation of a final memorandum of understanding, just to solidify, you know, whose responsibilities are whose per the city, way cab, et cetera. So it's just kind of going off of the application as a whole and solidifying that for ever in the future. If none of us are here, somebody can look back and say, hey, this was your responsibility, this was ours, so.
So Marcy, maybe you could just touch on that then too. God forbid if we have any that are damaged.
Sure. So I think the main concern had to do with if something ever happened, and obviously they're glass, so they're not indestructible. The casing that they will be in is very thick. It would be pretty hard to aim a rock. I guess that's what would happen if somebody would throw a rock. The framing is probably sticks out three inches on each side of each piece of glass, and that's cast iron, I think. But if something like that were to happen, the arts board would be involved in determining if the piece of glass could be repaired or if it needed to be replaced. We've already had one that did break, and it was amazing how the artist was able to repair it. So they don't always have to be replaced. The frames will hold 156 tiles, and we have over 170. So the extra tiles will be stored at the rec center or Park and Rec. So in the event that we needed to replace one, we would be able to.
Okay. Paul, go ahead.
Are you going to have some sort of information placard there as to who's is whose?
Oh, who's is whose? Actually, on our website, we already have the gallery up, so every person who made one, there is, the picture of their tile is on the website, and I think there's a link in your packet, and so you can see who made which tile. Actually, quite a few of them had stories, so I don't know how many of you got to go to the exhibit, but we had a really beautiful exhibit with the collaboration of the library. So thanks, Eric. Liz did a museum quality exhibit for us where we had the stories of some of the specific tiles. Some of them were very touching, and we plan to put all of that on our website to just sort of, kind of have the whole history of the entire project will be going up on our website. But it won't, you know, obviously a plaque. So the plaque that we're thinking of doing, it'll be very simple. It will, it will just name the partners and I think the funders, one of them is the state arts board through National Endowment for the Arts Grant. But then we're going to have a QR code that will lead people to the website, so they'll be able to see who made what tile.
Go ahead, Eric.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but did I read in there that some of the framework was actually from the steel from the trolley rails that were taken from the Main Street project?
Yes, so after the street was dug up, I can't remember who asked you to save those rails. I think it might have been Anita or maybe Tracy from the Historical Society. But anyway, they graciously saved the rails, and they were rusty and dirty with the intention of using them for some sort of art piece. And so the decision was made to just melt them down because they were pretty ugly, and they would not have enhanced the look of the art piece. So they were melted down to create the framework. Yeah, that was cool.
All right.
Any other questions?
This is for staff and maybe Justin. We were talking about a new pedestrian bridge, and it's going to cross this river. Is this going to impede, or was it considered where the bridge might go when this was placed?
Yeah, this is not in the location of the bridge. Won't impede anything.
I kind of figured you'd figured that, but I.
Actually, it'll be really nice that you'll be able to kind of gaze at it from not only the ramp off of Main Street, but also the potential bridge. Yes?
Colin, go ahead.
A few years ago, we, we tore down, I guess it was a bandstand that was back in that area a little bit. I guess I get screwed up in Wapaka's, upriver, I'll say, from there. And due to vandalism, I guess. And, and it sounds like you've looked at other locations as far as suitability. Has everyone considered vandalism? You know, you can imagine rocks. There's a lot of things I can't imagine that vandals do. And I don't, I guess that would be my concern to put it back there. I'm all for it. I don't say that it's the wrong thing to do, but I don't know if we add some sort of video surveillance or something to that area to try and protect what appears to me is probably quite a valuable piece of artwork. And I don't know if there's been discussion about it.
Yeah, we've had.
I'm not asking real specific questions.
It's a good question, and it comes up a lot, and I think that it's, it's a really interesting discussion that we've had on many levels. So one thing I'm going to say about it is, first of all, when we applied for funding through the, through the state arts board, we had to have matching funds. So we requested the matching funds to come through the placemakers committee, which is, was temporarily set up to help fund things like the, well, the speaker system downtown, the sidewalk poetry was part of that, and all of the beautiful bikes, bike rack things that are downtown. And so they had some extra funding because they had such a successful campaign. And so we applied to use some of those funds, and they said that we could have the funds with the stipulation that it was installed in the downtown area. So that limited our ability to install the sculpture. And we did a walk around with, we made some cardboard mockups of the eight foot panels, and we walked around. It was raining that day, it was kind of funny. And we tried to decide, you know, where they could be. Should we split them up? And when we got down, you know, we walked all the way from one end to the other of Main Street, talked about different options. And when we went down to the Rotary Park, it was kind of the epiphany that that was the perfect spot. That's where we had our first discussion about vandalism. One of the things that was pointed out was when they removed the bandstand, the level of vandalism dropped significantly. In fact, I don't think there's been any vandalism since then. So that was a good point. The other thing we discussed quite a bit was, there's a lot of research out there about when you beautify an area and you involve community and you bring people to the area, the vandalism goes down. So that's kind of what we're hoping. You know, we could be proven wrong, but we talked about if, if something does get vandalized, it's pretty often that the police know who did it. And so then we would try to do some restorative justice with that person, have them help us replace the tiles, maybe work with them through, you know, the arts hub. It's usually kids that do it, right? So those are some of the discussions we've had at all levels. And I, I know that we can't guarantee that it won't be vandalized, just like we can't guarantee anything would not be vandalized. But we're hoping that people will respect the sculpture. It's made by so many different people with families, and we're just hoping that it's going to turn out okay. Yes.
I can just make one comment on that. I think one thing about that bandstand is, is the bandstand was used as an obstruction, and, and you could go into the bandstand, which was almost an attraction for vandals and the activity that was happening. Marcy's right, vandalism has definitely decreased since that has gone down, since that's come down.
The other thing that we talked about, Aaron, was as more businesses opened, and then phenomenally T-Dubs reopened, and it's exactly the same, and it's awesome. And maybe more things will happen down there, which would again reduce, because it's an isolated area really, but once it becomes more active, hopefully that will change.
And I think the only other point I wanted to make is in that MOU, anytime things go on city property, like if it became a serious issue in which we are constantly tending to it.
Yeah, we'd have to move it.
And I think all of us are aware of that possibility, and we're still comfortable putting it there. I think it's worth it.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Sounds like you've thought about it quite extensively.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up.
I understand that same theme of you had glass, you got it 12 feet from a playground. It might not be vandalism, it could be accidental if you went 12 feet. I mean, that's fine, I'm good for the program, but that would be another scary thing for me, curious kids standing around.
The reason that that particular plat was chosen was because underneath that entire park, there's a lot of rock, and that area that we call it the grassy knoll was the area that they were able to do drillings. We have to have four foot footings for each one, and ideally, we would have gone more towards the bandstand, but that's where the solid granite existed. So I guess we're just hoping. Actually, when you're down there and with a tape measure and measuring it out, and you can actually see that spot, it's not as cramped as we originally thought. So I encourage you to go down and, you know, just see what it feels like down there.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? We need a motion if you are in favor of this, to allow this project to go into Rotary Riverview Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Velicker, that the council approves the public art shine project going to Rotary Riverview Park. Any discussion? Just a voice vote here. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can I make one comment on this?
You can.
I think it was mentioned at the plan commission, this was really the first project where this new process was put into place for art projects. So the arts board was the guinea pig, and thank you for your patience, because I, I know it took us some time.
Yeah, so, I mean, it did go through, through three committees, and, I mean, one, obviously, it needs to go through the planning commission. It went through Parks and Rec because it is in a park, but it's also city property, so we felt like it needed to come to city council too for approval on that. And that's why we've seen it three different times. All right, next up, we have a request for street closures for the Wapaka Area Triathlon on August 16th. Aaron, you're taking this one.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, page 129, there's a memo. This memo looks very, very similar to lots of years past. This is the 23rd annual event for the Wapaka Area Triathlon. This year, it's on August 16th and August 17th. Of course, kids triathlons, August 16th. The main event is August 17th in the morning. Street closures will remain the same as the past several years. You can see those bullet pointed. I have attached the maps, so you can see kind of what that looks like. As always, we will have a meeting with law enforcement in early August to discuss that as well as public works, the logistics of the closures. We will notify all emergency services prior to the event, and we'd just be looking for approval. I guess before that, I would just like to give a plug. Anyone who's listening, it's an awesome event for youth and adults, and we're always looking for people to get involved, especially Wapaka residents. And Henry, you're the president, so if you have any other plugs or anything you'd like to say, feel free.
Well, just for the council's information, we do intend to do the, the HH Hinder thing, so we would be coming forward for a picnic license or whatever for the group. And I know we had a little confusion with it last year. We won't have it this year because now we know the process, so that should be coming next month.
All right. So again, just looking for your approval of the street closures for the Wapaka Area Triathlon. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Olson, that we approve of the street closures as outlined for August 16th and 17th for the Wapaka Area Triathlon. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Another event here, we got requests for street closures for the Rotary Rocktoberfest event on September 12th through the 14th.
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. This one, council members, is on page 132 of your packet. This, I am helping Bar Blackey and Rotary. I have not been intricately involved this year in this, but I did, I have in the past. It's my understanding that nothing has changed as far as site setup. You can see that site setup right here in the, the map. There is a, there are a couple of things that I want to mention. There is going to be a wine tent over here on the corner that has also happened the past several years, not where this is. And then there is no food truck this year. So wine tent over here on front lawn, everything else should remain the same. They would set up the tent on, let's see, Thursday at 5:00 PM, they'd start setting it up, September 12th. It'd be up, obviously, during, for the event on Friday, September 13th in the evening, and then it would be up through the farmer's market close on Saturday, the 14th, and they would take it down after that. Last year, the farmer's market did use it, and it worked out well, because I think it was actually raining. Maybe that was two years ago. So looking for approval for this event, again, very similar, if not the same as past years.
Move to approve.
Motion by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve of the road closures for Rocktoberfest on July 12th through the 14th. Discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, license report number 1679. This is on page 134 of your packet. As I said at last meeting, you know, this is the time of year for, for license renewals for the restaurants and bars, and because it runs from July 1st to June 30th. We just had a couple that did not get approved at the previous meeting, so we would need a motion to approve, license report number 1679. We have a motion to approve 1679.
Move.
Motion by Velicker?
Second.
Second by Dykstra, that we approve. That we approve, uh, license report number 1679. Any discussion?
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
We just had two people in here who are a different agent. Does this got to be changed on this one?
So Barb, do you want?
Yeah.
So the current ones are renewing it in case the ones that were here earlier, it doesn't go through. So you have to, you have to, um, file it 15 days. Yeah. I mean, if you approve it, it's just contingent on, it, it's just a backup if that doesn't go through.
Good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier.
Yeah, they have to file it 15 days before the council can, can act on it. And so if they waited, yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. All right. Uh, next up, uh, operators license, which are on page 135. You have a number of bartenders license. Here, again, we would just be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Nagel.
Second.
Second by Martin, that we approve, uh, license report number 1680. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Maximum time that we can have a council meeting is not two hours. It's an hour and 45 minutes. Let's remember that. Seems to be.
Well, we started late because of pictures.
Okay. All right. Uh, so, uh, the week of, uh, of July 4th, uh, July 4th is on a Thursday, of course. Uh, July 2nd is a city council meeting. Uh, and we do plan on having that meeting. Uh, so, uh, we do have some things that we'll, we'll have to have on, at that meeting. Uh, it does sound though like, uh, July 3rd, which would be the city planning commission meeting, that meeting is not going to be held. We'll let you know if, if something comes up, but right now there's nothing that, uh, needs to be done on July 3rd. So we'll, uh, we'll skip that, that meeting and just go to the August meeting. But do plan on a city council meeting for July 2nd. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting tonight? Uh, thanks for taking time out to, to get your pictures tonight. I've, I've already seen a preliminary view of that. Uh, so it looks great. Uh, most of us look pretty good in there, but, you know. We're looking for a motion to adjourn by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Olson. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.